Good evening, and thank you for joining us. Sorry, we got a little bit of a delay in the start here, but we're ready to go. So, thank you for joining us tonight. We are pleased to offer a candidate forum for 2023. We will be having the opportunity to hear from candidates for the Granville Village Council race. That'll be the first session this evening, followed by candidates for the school board in Granville. So, thanks again for joining us. This is hosted, this event, by the Granville Chamber Alliance, and also by the League of Women Voters of Licking County. I'm Steve Matheny. I'm Executive Director of the Granville Area Chamber of Commerce. So, just a minute of explanation here and background. This is a forum, a candidate forum. On purpose, it's not intended to be a debate. Rather, it's an opportunity for these candidates to share their thoughts and their views on the race that they are running for. So, we look forward to that. In terms of format, each of our candidates this evening will be given a one and a half minute opportunity for an opening statement. And then, in turn, following their opening statements, each candidate will have one minute to respond to two questions. Not simultaneously, but first, one question, they'll have a minute to respond, and then we will pose a second question, and they will each have the opportunity to reply to that second question. And at conclusion, they will have one minute available for a closing statement before we wrap up this portion of our evening. The village council race, the term of office for village council is four years, and we have five candidates with us this evening, running for four seats on Granville Village Council. I'm now gonna turn the mic over to Mary Tuamanen with the League of Women Voters. Mary?
Thanks. So, we're gonna start this evening with opening statements. I'm sorry I have to stand in front of you, Matt. One and a half minutes candidates have for opening statements, and we've asked you each to address three issues included in your opening. How long they've lived in the village, why they believe that they are a particularly strong candidate, and we also have a question about outside funding. If you have any outside funding beyond the village for your campaign, and if so, what's the benefit to the community of having outside funding? So, we did a little name drawing, and Laura Mickelson is going to begin, and then we'll move up to Phil and go in alphabetical order.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Granville Chamber of Commerce for bringing us together so that voters can learn about how we all want to contribute to the community by serving on village council. My name is Laura Mickelson. I feel privileged to be a lifetime resident of Granville. I'm a graduate of Granville High School, and like many of my peers, I went away to college, but I came back to Granville. For the past 30 years, I've been a public school educator. I was fortunate enough to meet my husband while running in the Dentis and Biological Reserve, and we've since raised our two children here, Dylan and Eli, and they are also graduates of Granville High School. Four years ago, I ran for council to give back to the community. I had no idea we were about to enter into a pandemic, let alone the announcement of Intel, an announcement that has already led to considerable change. Now, I'm running for reelection because I'm fully invested in ensuring that in the future, Granville continues to be a community we know and love. As an educator, I know the importance of being a lifetime learner and listener. Over the past four years, I have a proven track record of listening to residents and being their voice. This is a critical time in Granville's history. The potential growth from Intel needs to be balanced by sustainable practices so that the Granville maintains its sense of place, quality of life, and rural character that draws so many to live and play in our community. We are facing generational change, and we need experience on council. I have that experience, and I will continue to represent the residents' interests. As for campaign financing, I practice what I preach: sustainability. Sustainability of funds and the environment. I only raised what I needed: $200 from local donors, and I matched that with my own $214.62. I'm reusing, repurposing my signs and flyers. This is sustainable and responsible campaign financing. Thank you.
Phil?
Hi, I'm Phil Dumarest, and I'm running for reelection to Granville Village Council. I grew up in Granville, graduated Granville High School in 2005. Went away to college, and in 2015, when I finished law school, I decided to move back to Granville because it was a place that had given me so much, and I wanted a place to raise my future family. So, I moved back to Granville, started a legal practice in Newark with a firm there, and I have served on council since 2017. In that time, I have been there during the Intel announcement and all of the ensuing discussion about coming development, and I think that this has really prepared me for the coming four years, to engage with that development and to find a way for suitable development, desirable development, here in Granville. One issue that you'll hear me talk a little bit more about tonight is the Joint Economic Development District that's near completion out Columbus Road, a way that we can put reasonable commercial development in our area without interfering with our community downtown. Regarding campaign finance, I've solicited donations from friends in the village and some colleagues out of the village. Regardless, you know, those contributions enable me to employ my message here in the village and to communicate most effectively to you.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Johnson. I'd like to also thank the chamber and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event, as well as thank my fellow applicants or for village council. My wife and I have been blessed to live in the village for 17 years. This is what we call home. We've raised our four children, Cole, Ella, Grady, and Liza here. I believe in giving back to the community, so in 2011, I put my name in the hat to run for village council and was blessed to be elected. I'm currently completing my third term, 12 years. Pride of serving on the village council, I also served on the Granville Planning Commission. My focus on council has been to be an active listener. I listen intently to the residents, as well as my fellow council members. I consider all viewpoints. I thoroughly think about the legislation that's brought before us, and I also work to make sure the residents understand the legislation, what it means, how it impacts them, and what they can expect in the future. During my time on council, we have done a number of good things, a lot of code revisions. Specifically, we most recently instituted the solar code, balancing the historic character of the district or the village with new technologies. We've also invested in commercial utilities, both in the middle district and out east at the orthopedic facility. We've also approved housing at Glen Shire and other places. I have not taken any campaign contributions, both inside or outside the village. I feel like my experience on council has positioned me well to lead for another four years.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Joe Lighthouser, and I'd also like to thank the Licking County League of Women Voters and the Granville Area Chamber of Commerce for supporting this event tonight and communicating, you know, what's great about Granville. The support I've received since announcing my candidacy for village council has been humbling. I've received support in the village, from the township, and across Licking County. As a Dentisonian, as Dentis and alumnus, I've received support from the Dentis and community as well, including two friends of mine who have provided out-of-state, small donations that I'm very grateful for. I'm grateful for their confidence in me to keep Granville the way, what they know and love. Susan and I moved back to Granville 23 years ago, and outside of proposing to Susan, probably the best decision I've ever made. It's been a great place to supported our young family at the time and allowed us to grow. The support we received from the community and the support our children have received through the school system, through Granville Recreational District, and the faith-based organizations have allowed them to meet any challenge that they've had to address. So, our kids have done amazing work here. As a professional, my job as a management consultant is to manage the growth that organizations deal with, the opportunities and the issues. I think I can bring those skills and that leadership to Granville Village Council.
Hi, my name is Matt McGowan. I've not received any outside donations, nor have I ever received any outside donations when I ran before. I've lived in the community for over 30 years. Like many residents, I moved here because Granville's a great place to live. I also am one of those individuals who live in Granville but commute to Columbus, where I taught for over 30 years, coached cross-country and track. However, when I was in town, I tried to be involved with as many activities as possible. I've been a member of the Granville Kiwanis for over 25 years, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. I also had the pleasure of serving as a mayor for two years of Granville, and the vice mayor for two years, and on council for 20 years. After retiring from teaching, I saw that Granville schools needed substitute teachers, so I applied three years ago and started being a substitute teacher. This year, I'm an educational aide at the Granville Middle School, so I hope to be able to return back to council and deal with all the issues we'll be facing today, as well as in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Now, we'll turn to our first question of the evening, and you will each have one minute time to reply or respond to this question, and we'll start with Phil. Phil, our question is, "The village is facing and will continue to face development issues related to Intel and other entities locating in Licking County. What is the biggest challenge faced by the village with regard to this development, and how would you address it as a council member?"
Sure, thank you. I've been knocking doors for the last month, trying to achieve my goal of knocking on every voter's door here in the village, and resoundingly, the central issue in this campaign right now seems to be the protection of Granville's water rights and the protection of our water resources, especially in light of the recent sale of this parcel at the edge of the village by the New Albany Company and its potential use for water wells. But the Granville Village Council is not without a plan. We have many tools at our disposal to directly address that challenge and to protect the resources that we have here so that we can have self-determination in how we achieve our comprehensive plan. One of those tools is this proposed joint water district between Granville, Alexandria, and Johnstown, which will enable us collectively to determine where that water and sewer lines run so that we can then determine where development goes, instead of having that thrust upon us by some outside force.
Jeremy?
Yes, thank you for the question, Steve. I would say that not only utilities, but housing pressures are some key factors that we're going to have to address over the next four years. I don't think we can take a defensive position on this. I think we have to be on the offense, and we have been on the offense even prior to Intel with some of our planning in collaboration with the township, but now we need to ramp that up. I would say that something that you need to know as residents is we can't do this alone. We need strategic partners. We need the residents' involvement. We need to continue to deepen our partnerships with Granville Township, St. Albans Township, Monroe Township, Alexandria, and Johnstown. As Councilman Dumarest mentioned, is strengthening and implementing this joint sewer and water district to protect our housing rights, our water rights, and to really control development. If you look at western Licking County, unless you control the utilities or you own the land, you really don't control anything, and this needs to be a primary focus going forward.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep, thanks, Steve. I'll share three thoughts about issues that I've heard from residents as I make my way about the community. First, maintaining our assets, the village, our village character, our school system, as we continue to diversify our tax base and grow commercial development in our village, that will be critical to the success. We've made a lot of progress over the last couple of years. The JED, the overlay district, and extending water and sewer beyond our boundaries have been great assets, are great ways to do that. I continue to support that. Secondly, as residents move into our community, there will be continued pressure on affordable housing. We can't do this alone. We need to partner with our communities. We need to use framework and our strategic plan as a guide, and the cross-jurisdictional relationships that were developed during the framework process should continue beyond and help us solve those challenges. Third, managing utilities is a hot-button issue. A growing community will, needs water and sewer, and I will work to continue the cross-community proposed plan in place today.
Thank you, Matt.
As everyone knows, Granville and the area is at risk of overdevelopment due to the expansion of the New Albany Intel Plant and other industrial growth. Most of our citizens moved here for the small-town quality of life, the plentiful green space, the walkability of the town, and the excellent schools. One of the most important priorities for the Granville Village Council in the next four years will be to manage the risk of overgrowth and protect all that we love. I will be particularly focusing on ensuring the availability of high quality of our water supply and sewer system. All of this will need to be done with an eye towards efficiency, as many of our citizens are feeling the weight of increased taxes and rising prices. It will be extremely important for Granville to work with neighboring communities, as well as our townships and other townships, in dealing with the issues we'll be facing in the future. Thank you.
And Laura, please.
Pressures from entities maneuvering to position themselves in our boundaries is one of our biggest challenges. For the past year, the village, along with 14 other jurisdictions known as the framework, has worked to collaborate on what is best for Licking County and Granville. It is imperative that we work with our neighbors. One example of this is Granville's water supply. It is vitally important that Granville collaborates with our neighboring jurisdictions. Currently, the Granville Village staff, in conjunction with Granville Township, Johnstown, Alexandria, and St. Albans and Monroe Townships are collaborating to create multi-jurisdictional partnership to provide water and sewer services outside municipal boundaries. Additionally, the village and township have been collaborating on a joint economic development district to build infrastructure that will foster economic development along the 16 corridor and help diversify our tax base. Through building relationships with our neighbors, we will maintain better control of our finite water resources and better position ourselves to guide the development that is coming our way. By making sure all of our resources are sustainable for current and future generations, we are ensuring that we remain in charge of our own destiny.
So, for our second question, candidates have a minute to respond to this one as well, and we'll start with Jeremy. And the question is, "Assuming you are elected, what about Granville? Do you want to be different by the end of your four-year term?"
Thank you, Mary. Well, I would say, I can tell you more of what I don't want to change than what I want to see change. I want to see us remain a beautiful, safe, financially stable community that continues to promote and value what we all know and love here. Certainly, we should consider things like tax-based diversification, and we should absolutely be focused on our utility management, as well as our land preservation, preserving our farmland. Those are things we have to do. In addition to that, I think we have to continue to dialogue with one another. We are stronger together than we are apart, and we need resident involvement. We need to continue to partner with, as I said before, our other municipalities around us to keep Granville strong. When we talk to one another well and we share our ideas, we're stronger. We make better decisions. And I would just say, if I want to see anything mature the most, I'd love to see more community involvement, in person, not on social media, at our council meetings, where we can really tap into the resources we have in this wonderful community.
Joe?
Thank you. If I had a crystal ball, what I would like to see is that we've absorbed the growth from the West, maintaining the character and what we love about our village. My vision for Granville in the future is that we've diversified our tax base by smart development, development that meets the needs of our community and really fits into the character of our community. I would also like to see, continue the cross-jurisdictional relationships that have been developed over the last few years, and continue to grow those so we can address the housing and utility issues that will inevitably affect us as we continue to grow from the West. I would also like to see improved recreational options, walking paths, more indoor and outdoor recreational facilities as well for a healthy environment. And lastly, what I'd like to see, as Susan and I walk into town, is reelect Joe Lighthouser for village council signs.
Matt?
If elected, at the end of my term, I hope citizens will agree that Granville is still a great place to live and raise a family. Hope our policies and spending will have been sensitive to the financial concerns of our residents on fixed income or facing tough times. And finally, I hope the residents will know me as a council member who listens, does his homework on the issues, and provides a voice for those who might be too busy to regularly attend council meetings. Thank you.
Laura?
I'm gonna sound like Jeremy here. There's a lot that's going to be different in the next four years, and I think the real question is, what do we want to maintain? My focus is to ensure that Granville is in control of its own destiny, that sustainability and affordability are front and center. Sustainability of our resources and the threat to those, such as water and the environment, is one priority. This means that environmental considerations need to guide smart development practices, fourth that to land use, and strategic regional water and sewer planning. Secondly, we must be intentional about affordability for our residents. As a lifetime resident, I understand the need to stay vigilant so that Granville remains open to all of us. We are not just a place, we are people who live in this unique and welcoming community. Growth is inevitable, but we can take charge of our own future and foster that growth to our own benefit while also ensuring that Granville maintains a sense of place, the quality of life, and rural character that draws so many to live, play, and call Granville home. Thank you.
Phil?
As everybody in the room can tell you, development is coming our way with Intel now on our doorstep, and it's important for us to engage that development in a way that preserves our community here at home. The best way for us to do that is the formation and completion of this Joint Economic Development District that would run sewer and water lines out Columbus Road with the idea that that is the ideal corridor for the next phase of commercial development in our area, without having to force the village to annex large swaths of the township. This is really a unique opportunity for us to embrace and a way for us to put that development in a suitable place. Also, it's really important for us to focus on providing housing for the empty nesters in our community who are looking to downsize. We've done that with the Glen Shire development on Newark Granville Road, with the condominiums behind the Fackler storefront, and this is a way for us to make space for the next generation of people to come to Granville.
Okay, thank you, candidates. Now, let's pause, take a breath, and we have now our closing statements. So, take a deep breath, and Joe, you get to start us off with a closing statement of one minute, please.
Thanks, Steve. An active and involved community is the key to a vibrant village. The theme of my campaign is "Joe Knows Granville." Christine and Guy Michael helped me come up with this theme. It was really a description of the relationships that I've been able to build over the last 23 years, living as your neighbor. Although "Joe Knows Granville" is my theme, I don't know everything, and the continued work to communicate and converse with the village and understand the needs and desires of every person is gonna be important to making the right decisions. We may not agree with every decision, as long as we have a transparent process and an open line of communication, we can grow together.
Thank you, Matt.
I think everyone sitting at this table would be a good council member, and I've had the pleasure to work with many of these individuals over the years. Hopefully, voters will see my past experience on council as an asset for the challenging times ahead for Granville. I would appreciate your vote to continue to serve this great community. Thank you and good night.
And Laura, please.
I'd like to thank all who have tuned in tonight or who are watching at a later date. Voting is our civic duty. It's also our duty to be informed so that we can make the best decisions for our community moving forward. I encourage each one of you to continue to stay involved because that is how local government, our village council, works. I've worked side-by-side with my council peers and served on many commissions and committees with community members. I've experienced firsthand how Granville Village Council operates transparently and collaborates with each other, our community, and our neighboring jurisdictions. Since the 50-plus years that I have lived in Granville, we have grown and changed tremendously. Through our high standards, like those of our school, we have maintained our sense of identity and controlled our own destiny along and controlled our own destiny alongside this growth and change. Now, we are in a critical chapter in our history of our community unlike any we have seen thus far. We need experienced hands to continue the work we have started in guiding this growth and controlling our future so that we can retain the character and quality of life. I'm honored to have served four years in council, and I would be honored to continue serving this community for another four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Phil, please.
I'm running for reelection to Granville Council, because I think that we are in the middle of some really great projects that have the possibility to preserve what Granville has while also growing and making Granville an even better place to live. And so, I hope to see some of those projects through over the next four years. And with that, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
And Jeremy, you get the last word.
Again, I want to thank the chamber and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring tonight, and also to the other candidates here for being here. We have many challenges ahead. That's been discussed thoroughly tonight. It's a time for steady leadership, experienced leadership, that is very informed about what's going on. It's a time for stewardship of our natural resources, certainly investment in viable, commercial development, low-density, appropriate, Granville-friendly development that preserves our farmland. We are prepared. I want to assure the residents, we are prepared. But it's going to be hard work, and we need your support. I encourage all of you to vote, get out and vote, but also stay involved after voting. In closing, I would consider it a privilege to continue to serve you as a councilperson. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you all particularly very much. Thanks, each and every one of you, for your interest to serve our community, and good luck to you all. At this point, we're going to pause briefly and have a short intermission while we change some chairs around and bring our school board candidates in-house here. So thanks again to our village council candidates. Good luck to you all. And stay with us, audience. We'll be back in just a few minutes with the school board candidates. Thank you.
Welcome. I'm Mary Tuamanen. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters here in Lincoln County. And we are co-hosting the forum this evening with Granville Chamber Alliance. Steve Matheny, the executive director, is here as well. And this is our second forum this evening, our Granville School Board Candidates. We're going to follow the same format that we did with our earlier forum. This is a forum, it's not a debate. So candidates will be speaking to the audience, providing you with information about their position on issues and their platform. They won't be engaging with one another directly. And the questions that we are giving candidates, we've given them advance, and they've come from the community. We ask the communities to submit questions. So the questions are selected from those that the community has provided. Each candidate is going to offer a minute and a half opening statement. Then we'll have one question. Each candidate will respond, have a minute to respond. We'll have a second question with each candidate responding, and then we'll have closing statements of a minute each. Rita Kipp is our timekeeper. And we have four candidates running for three positions for a school board. Each term is a four-year term. Our candidates are Amy Deeds, Megan Reed, Cecile Shaw, and Fred Wolf.
Thank you, Mary. Just a little more background for our audience. Each of these candidates has been invited to make a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement, including telling us, sharing with us, how long have they lived in the school district, and any background they may have in education. They are also asked to share if there are any entities outside the community that may be funding their campaign, and if they are receiving outside funding, why this is beneficial to the election. Now, we will begin with our candidate opening statements, and we will start with Megan Reed. Megan?
Good evening. My name is Megan Reed, and I'm a 10-year resident of Granville. My husband and I have three boys in three different Granville school buildings. And we moved to Granville for the schools and are pleased with the excellent education our children are receiving. Personally, I am a certified nurse practitioner trained in trauma and functional medicine, with my own private practice in Newark. My goal is to get patients to optimal health, as many chronic diseases are based off of their emotions that they're having. I treat many patients with anxiety, depression, and diabetes, just to name a few. My expertise in these areas, especially with regards to adolescent mental health, will be an asset to the board. I'm so proud I've had so many Granville residents, both village and township, that generously donate their time to help me. This is truly a grassroots effort, and I'm very humbled by their support. In addition to my professional experience, I am also the only candidate running that is not currently on the board. I will offer a healthy, fresh perspective, having visited hundreds and hundreds of residents with their homes over the last few weeks. I have a vested interest in making sure that our kids are the best, that our schools are the best it can possibly be, because my kids are currently receiving their education and preparing for their future right here in Granville. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecile?
Thanks. Hello. Sorry, the mic. I'm trying to figure how close it gets. All right. So thank you to the league. Thank you to the chamber and everyone who submitted questions. My name is Cecile Shaw, and I am a teacher. I've been a teacher in various roles for over 20 years. Currently, I teach sixth-grade English language learners. I began teaching in September of 2001 in Brooklyn, New York. And 9/11 shaped everything. School safety and the well-being of our students really was paramount, and those foundations have continued to be a touchstone for me. The ability to navigate through diverse opinions was part of being a teacher in the early 2000s in New York, and has helped me during the past four years as a school board member. Over the past four years, I have learned so much while working on the board. The board evaluates the superintendent and treasurer twice a year. We discuss the staff's contract negotiations. We're updated on the finances of the district. We discuss the variety of programs and learning opportunities that students have in Granville. We talk about the growth that is coming to Granville. We have many diverse opinions on the board, and sometimes we disagree, but always with respect. We recognize the importance of coming together for the benefit of the students. I am excited to keep learning, keep listening, and keep informing our community about the schools.
Thank you. And Fred?
Thank you, Steve. I'd also like to thank the league and the chamber for sponsoring this forum. My wife and I are 24-year residents of Granville. We have, proud to say, three graduates of Granville High School. I've been a board member since 2018. Currently serve as the board vice president, and I also have the privilege of being the Granville representative on the CTEC board. I've been an active part of the community for over 20 years, served as the Granville Athletic Booster President for 16 years. I am a former Granville Rec. District Trustee, member of the Kiwanis, where I've served as the Fourth of July co-chair. I also was a volunteer football coach for the middle school for 20 years. And even though my three children are graduates of Granville, I continue volunteering and serving our community. And I look forward to continuing in that role as a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy?
Thank you. My name is Amy Deeds. I'm the Assistant Fiscal Officer for Granville Township. I'm also a fifth-generation Granville resident. My great-grandfather donated land for a one-room schoolhouse so his sons and the neighboring children could get an education. My father was a university professor. My aunt served on the Granville School Board, and my mother-in-law taught at Granville Elementary for decades. My family has a deep-rooted tradition of valuing education and public service. Since I first ran for this office in 2007, when I shared expenses on a mailing with two other candidates, I've not accepted or spent a penny on a race. My campaign account has had $10.70 in it for 16 years. I don't do signs. I hope and believe that my record speaks for itself. If I'm reelected, this will be my fifth term on the board.
So our first question for candidates, we'll start with Cecile, and each person has one minute to respond to the question. This question is, do you believe that our school librarians are best equipped to select and curate the library collection materials for the age range served at each of our district schools? If so, why do you believe this? If not, who should make that decision and why? We'll start with Cecile.
Okay. Thank you. So, school librarians, in conjunction with other educational or education professionals, are the ones who select and curate the school libraries. My father was a librarian, and I understand that that is a profession in which there is experience and education that goes into it. The librarian and the other school personnel are educated professionals who the district hires for their expertise. As a school board member, I hire and evaluate the superintendent and treasurer. The school board is a governance team, and my role is to work with my fellow board members to act as responsible and positive liaisons between the district and the community. As a board member, I listen to the community members' perspectives and bring those up with my fellow board members and the administration of the schools. Thank you.
Fred?
Thank you. I think our librarians are outstanding. I think Granville has a very good record for not only hiring librarians, but also staff and teachers. And I'm proud of that fact. And I also believe that Granville School District does a great job of engaging parents and students when it comes to curriculum, programs, extracurricular. And so, I'm very proud that parents and students and the community have the opportunity to engage with our school district. Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you. Our school librarians are professionally trained to select and maintain an age-appropriate collection for each of our school buildings. More important, they teach our students to differentiate between legitimate sources and misinformation online. With the world at their fingertips, our students must develop critical thinking skills, one of our portrait of a graduate traits, so they can make informed choices. Age does not determine maturity, and what's appropriate for one child may not be for another. All of our parents are encouraged to be involved in decision-making on what materials their own children may access. But children of all ages benefit from seeing themselves reflected in what they read. The most vulnerable children need access to materials they can identify with, whether or not these materials are deemed widely appropriate. Thank you.
And Megan?
Thank you. I believe in the value of collaboration to develop best practices. Librarians are trained to know what is developmentally appropriate for the ages of children within their buildings, and we should rely on their expertise. I also trust parents, along with our librarians and teachers, to work together regarding book selections for children. Additionally, collaboration ensures that academic material is suitable for students and families of diverse backgrounds. The district has acknowledged that some mistakes were made with the recent junior class research project, and I'd be encouraged that there would be some adjustments going forward. What makes Granville so unique and special is that parents do partner with our exceptionally trained staff and members to help all of our students excel.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question, question number two, and you will each, again, have one minute to reply or respond to this question. And that question is, are there any educational goals, subjects, or courses you would seek to add to, remove from, or change in the Granville School District curriculum? If so, please specify what they are and why you would seek this change. And we'll start with Fred, please.
Thanks, Steve. As I just said, I'm very proud of the fact that the Granville schools, the administration are always open to input from the community, from the parents and the students. I think our district does a very good job of evaluating, assessing, and looking at the curriculum and evaluating the programs every year. And I want to continue that as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. And Amy?
Thank you. Our number-one concern must be student mental health. We do a great job academically. Our students excel at extracurriculars. But we must do at least as good a job of imbuing them with our portrait of a graduate traits, which will truly determine their future success. Our community, our state, and our country need a generation of resilient, adaptable, empathetic, collaborative, responsible, critical thinkers. We have held too many funerals for promising young people who were not prepared for life after Granville High School. We must find ways to reduce student stress and anxiety, and help them build coping skills that do not include drugs, alcohol, or self-harm. Resilience is a better predictor of success than a resume.
Thank you. And Megan, please.
We're blessed in Granville to have a rich tradition of high-quality staff and resources. But there are still opportunities for improvement to help our students be successful in life. Appropriate financial literacy- Appropriate financial literacy education and ongoing exposure to entrepreneurship are two areas that would benefit the district greatly. My expertise with private practice business ownership and balancing budgets has demonstrated how valuable and relevant that these subjects are in the world. State standards have improved over the past several years regarding financial literacy, but it's still not enough. The students would benefit from consistent exposure to core principles such as budgeting, investing, taxes, and retirement. I would love to see Granville become an innovative educational state leader in these subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cecile, please.
Thank you. So, something I learned recently at the community forum at the beginning of the year is that high-achieving students, especially, or excuse me, generally from affluent districts are also at risk for anxiety and depression. Our children feel a cultural pressure to be the best, and while many of us are comfortable talking about therapy, about sharing about our own mental health, or in general about mental health, we also need to be proactive. And I'm proud to say that Granville schools are doing this. We contract with Guidestone Health to have more professionals in the schools to help kids. We have a successful PBIS or Positive Behavior program to help with behavior. Our school counselors teach about kindness and choices. We were awarded a grant specific to our high school athletes' mental health. And we're going even farther by adding self-determined learning, which is when students are given choice. Along with all the responsibilities we give our students, they will also be able to design some of their learning. This is an initiative that I am proud to support.
Thanks. Now, we'll move to our closing statements. Each candidate has a minute for their closing statement, and we'll start with Amy.
Thank you. Thank you to the Chamber and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Our school district is facing serious challenges, including school funding, enrollment growth, and student and staff mental health. We need to continue to focus on what we can control and to prepare for what we cannot. I serve on the superintendent's Strategic Task Force, which has convened a group of residents to prepare us for the intel effect on our community. I helped choose Jeff Brown as our superintendent and Brittany Triolo as our treasurer. Jeff came to us from Owletangie, a district which was experiencing explosive growth. We chose Jeff for his academic expertise, but his experience with enrollment growth is proving invaluable. Experience matters now more than ever. I hope you will reelect me to the Granville School Board. Thank you.
Megan?
One of the most prevalent concerns for children today is mental health. My professional experience as a nurse practitioner uniquely qualifies me to help address these concerns, as well as issues like bullying, discrimination, and anxiety-causing stressors. Additionally, if elected, I would be the only board member that sided with the Granville voters against the permanent income tax. I do support responsible renewal levies when needed, but if I'm elected, it would guarantee that the majority sentiment will have a voice on financial matters. We also need someone with a vision for the future of Granville schools. The income and growth associated with intel needs to be addressed, intentionally and thoughtfully. I believe a plan that involves working with the village and local townships to place strict guidelines on potential future developments will be key. This will be able to enlarge, pardon my, this will enable larger lot sizes to curb high-density housing. Most of all, I look forward to ensuring that Granville schools continue to be the focal point of a wonderful community to raise our families and to prepare the next generations of leaders. Thank you.
Cecile?
Thank you. So, thank you all for tuning in, whether you're live or tuning in later. As an English language learning teacher, students come to me with various needs. My students come from all over the world. Sometimes, their education has been interrupted, and they are at many different grade levels. So, I have to work to meet their needs, much like how I work with community members to hear their concerns here in Granville. While we may have different opinions, I will always listen to you. Over the past four years in office, I have stood up for people's concerns, collaborated with board members, shared the public's opinions with our superintendent, and I've sat down with people who have varying beliefs. No matter our differences, I know our community will continue to thrive if we can listen to each other and learn from each other. Thank you.
Fred?
Thank you. I also'd like to thank the League and the Chamber again for hosting this forum. 25 years ago, my wife Diane and I had an opportunity to move back to Ohio, and we wanted to move back to central Ohio because we'd been married in Columbus. We looked around at a lot of school districts, a lot of towns, and we settled on Granville, not only for the charm of the community, but also the education opportunities that are offered for our children. We have three children that have done very well by Granville schools. I'm proud to serve as a board member. I'm excited about how our district is actively taking a leadership role in the exciting challenges we face with incoming, with growth, and financial stability. Our board is a collaborative board. I enjoy working with our members. I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
So, just to wrap things up, thank you to our candidates for your time and preparation and for your participation this evening. And just a reminder to voters that early voting has begun at the Board of Elections, which is in the Licking County Administration Building, right off the square in Newark. And my understanding is there's a slide that's going to be put up that includes the hours and times for early voting, but I just want to take a minute to reiterate them here. Through this week, through Friday, October 27th, early voting is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is Monday through Friday. Next week, the week before election, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., so extended hours. And Saturday and Sunday, there'll be early voting also at the Board of Elections. Saturday, November 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And Sunday, November 5th, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And of course, Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. So, thanks to the candidates and thanks to the audience who's watching live, or folks who are watching and recording, and have a good evening. Did you use your cough drops, ma'am?